Let's call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the regular commission meeting of Wednesday, May 15. It is 7:30 PM. And tonight, for the invocation, our city clerk is going to do the invocation for us this evening. Please rise.
Please rise. Let's bow our heads. Lord, we would like to give you thanks for all the daily blessings you bestow upon us. Please continue to watch over and protect all of our first responders and military service members during this difficult time in our nation. We also ask that you watch over our city leaders, elected officials, and administrators so they can continue to make sound decisions on behalf of our city residents. We ask all of these in your holy name. Amen.
And this evening, Mr. Penna is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Next item is item three, roll call. Mayor Ron Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Candida Blanca. Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Eric Diaz-Fadron.
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item is item four, presentation of minutes for approval for April 17, 2019, regular commission meeting.
Motion?
Second.
Are all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Presentation of minutes for approval for May 1, 2019, regular commission meeting.
Motion?
Second.
Are all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item?
Next item, item five, public comments.
So anyone?
Nobody has registered to speak before you, Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Proceed.
Item six, report of the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the city commission. Good evening. My report is written, and it was submitted late this afternoon because we wanted to include all the up-to-date information that our office is involved with. The first item on the report is Mayor Rodriguez. Marilyn Stevens from the U.S. Census and I met early this week. Ms. Stevens has been invited by the mayor to attend your June 5 city commission meeting to address the full commission on the importance of the upcoming census. It is imperative that we all put our best foot forward in educating our city residents on why the census is so important. Our goal is to ensure that we receive our fair share in revenue based on population. The census also offers employment opportunity as well, and we will be reaching out to our recreation center leaders and help to promote jobs for our college students. So, anyone you know in the community that is looking for permanent positions, college students primarily, would be great. They compensate their employees very nicely, and they also accommodate candidates with flexible hours and mileage reimbursement. So, it's a good program for the next year, or I suspect, or better. They are recruiting at this time, and we're going to be using some information that Ms. Stevens left with the mayor and myself on the census in terms of publications, and it's going to give us website information and a lot of statistical data that will be helpful to the city moving forward in applying for grants and getting statistical background and demographic background. So, that's going to be an interesting presentation. The next item is the City of West Miami Recreation Center weight room. This office, along with our Director of Public Works, Juan Penna, and our city engineers, met earlier this week, or late last week, regarding the initial concept for the Recreation Center Wellness Center. After some staff input, the city engineers are in the process of making some final touches to the design-build concept to be presented to the mayor and city commission at the June 5, correct, Mr. Penna? June 5 meeting, before we go to bid. I have stressed the importance of building a structure that the city is able to sustain beyond the construction phase. This is critical for future budget years. The traffic study is ongoing. That's the next item on my report, is underway. There are several traffic counters citywide collecting data. The traffic counters will be removed by the end of this week, and they will be repositioned early next week in other streets and avenues. So, this is the phase where they're doing all the data collection, especially before the school session ends this year. The next item in my report is the Police Benevolent Association contract negotiations. The city is starting negotiations early next week. Actually, we have a scheduled appointment on May 21. These negotiations will assist us in best preparing our 2019-2020 budget projections. Negotiations cannot be disclosed, as per our agreement, until we have a proposal for approval and after ratification by the majority of the membership. Then the agreement will be presented to the mayor and city commission for final approval. The next item in my report, on page two, involves some personnel issues in the City of West Miami Police Department. The city is losing personnel and going through some attrition stages added by some personnel matters at this time. We are making strides by filling full-time positions left vacant by expected resignations and retirements. The other personnel matters are being addressed by the proper agencies and in the proper format. Three employees are signing on to the drop program during the next two weeks in the police department. This said, the my office and the finance director are consulting with our independent auditors to ensure that the large sums of payout due to them can be paid from reserves designated funds. These payouts are in excess of $150,000 with benefits for three tenured law enforcement officers. These monies were not budgeted, and per our chief of police, we were not notified that these three law enforcement officers will be entering the drop during this fiscal year. So, it's something that our office has been dealing with, with the police department administration over the last few weeks. As you can imagine, this is a huge ticket item for the city's coffers. However, per our collective bargaining agreement, they are due and shall, you know, we shall pay these sums for the officers' accrued time before they enter the drop program. So, we will get back to you with a formal report on the finances because it is a large ticket item on how we propose to handle these payouts. And just this afternoon, we also got notice of a resignation from one of our communications officers who's leaving the Miami area with her husband, and she's a tenured employee. Barbara Knowles will be resigning on June 12. So, we're going through a lot of changes downstairs. The next item in my report is the passport office. Again, the Director of Public Works, Juan Penna, and I met with our city engineers, and they in turn met with the low bidder, the only bidder in the last round of sealed bids for the passport office expansion project, to see if there were any opportunities to reduce some of the line items in the bid so that we can meet our designated reserves amount, which is approximately $220,000 for this project. But that shall include all the furnishings, everything from, take that project from A to Z. So, at the next commission meeting, there's a great, a good possibility that we will bring the bid back to you, repackaged in some fashion, so that we can meet our budget goals. I emphatically, during this meeting, stressed the importance of staying within the budget allocations for this, as well as other projects. The Office of Property Appraiser. The Office of Property Appraiser will be delivering the 2018 tax assessments on June 1, 2019. These numbers will give us an idea of where West Miami is in terms of real estate and property taxes, over or under last year. We expect that we will see growth in those numbers due to recent sales and construction. Any development under construction at this time will not be considered, there will not be considered in the tax rolls until they are issued what they call a TCO. That means a temporary certificate of occupancy. As you know, we have several developments, one on 67th Avenue, and two on Southwest 8 Street, that are, I don't believe that they will be TCO'd by the magic date of June 1, so that will probably come in next year around this time for the 2019 rolls. So, I will be issuing memos moving forward that specifically address the goals of the budget and the mandatory issues that we need to address, and the dates, and all the compliance issues. The twenty, next item on the agenda, I mean, on my report, is the 2019-2020 city budget. We held our first budget meeting with the police department this week on matters involving budget projections for next year. One of them addressed above, which is the issue of manpower allocations, and a memo will be issued by our office, hopefully by Friday of this week or Monday of next week, asking each department director to submit a preliminary budget no later than June 17, so that we can start preparing and collecting data for the preliminary budget projections. We will be reaching out to each city commissioner individually, of course, to set up meetings in the coming weeks to discuss your priorities and committee needs so that we can include them in the budget. The last item on my report is summer camp. The 2019 summer camp registration is officially underway. As of this afternoon, at 6:00 PM, we have 57 registered campers, and we expect this number will grow over the next two weeks. We ordered a point-of-service machine that basically allows parents to pay with a debit or a credit card. This allows parents or guardians choices when it comes for payment of summer camp activities and field trips, and it's cleaner for accounting purposes. Also, it should reduce the number of NSF checks that are returned to the city, and then we have to go back and, you know, talk to the parents about paying these amounts. So, hopefully, this is yet another, another small step to becoming more modern in terms of giving options to those who visit the city for a service. That concludes my report, and I am more than happy to address any questions that you may have on any of these items or anything else.
That POS machine was a long thing. It's good that it's here.
Yes.
That was necessary a long time ago, so I'm very happy to hear that.
Yes, and we will be installing this sometime early next week. Good.
Okay, next, any questions or comments for city manager? Madam Clerk, next item?
Item seven, report of the city attorney.
I don't have a report, I just simply have a request. The clerk of the City of West Miami is mandated to have the packages for the commission meetings on a Friday before the Wednesday that we're supposed to meet. I would request a formal policy by the city commission that any request for resolutions or ordinances that is required, unless it's in a special need, to give the city attorney five working days before the petition is made. In other words, give me five working days before you ask me for a, for the preparation of a resolution or an ordinance.
Okay. Any concerns with that? Any questions?
Okay with me. Okay.
What, do you need just an okay from everyone? Or do you need a, how do you want us to incorporate this into the record?
No, no, I just need a, to inform it that this is my request, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Did you have something, Madam Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would recommend that we put that in a form of written administrative order for the clerk to follow.
Okay.
For the future, and that way, if any commissioner requests to have something, you know, short of the five-day window that Mr. Villalobos is requesting, we have something to go back to that refers as to your okay or consent with this request dated today's meeting.
So, Mr. Attorney, what you're saying, just to be sure I understand, before asking you for something, we need, I mean, when we ask you for something, you need five days before you?
Five working days.
Five working days to have it prepared?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. This will not only ease the burden on the city commission, but the burden on me and also the city clerk, because it's very difficult with the city clerk. It's quite a job to create a package, a, for a commission meeting, so to come at the last time and say, well, I meant this, I meant that, it's very difficult.
I think that's reasonable, very reasonable.
Now, do we not have that in place already, or no?
There's no, there was no policy in place, or no?
It's been off and on.
Off and on, okay, so?
Right. We just wanted to have it official.
What you have is, if I may, a four-day rule for the submittal of the agenda, and this is following?
Five days for the city attorney?
No, no. The five days are for him, the city attorney, to prepare an ordinance or a resolution, as it may be requested by any member of the city commission.
Except that if there's an emergency, of course, I'll be able to do whatever.
Of course, of course. Is there anyone opposed to this?
No.
Okay, so be it.
Thank you.
Administrative order, Madam Clerk?
We'll put something together for the next meeting.
Thank you. Next item?
Item eight, report of the city engineers, non this evening. Item nine, committee reports, report of the mayor.
Any committee reports? I do have a report, Madam Clerk, thank you. I will be going, attending an award ceremony on June 4 for the Sylvania Heights graduating fifth grade, where we present them certificates from the City of West Miami. I think we call them certificates of completion, right, Madam Clerk? What do we call those certificates that we give the graduating class?
Of academic completion.
Something academic completion. So, it was just brought to my attention yesterday that Sylvania Heights is celebrating their 75th anniversary. I was kind of like shocked to hear that, I didn't realize it had been that long. So, with your permission and approval, I would like to request a proclamation to give to the school on the day that I'm there at the award ceremony for their 75th anniversary.
Agree.
Agree? Anyone opposed? Madam Clerk, I'll get with you on that tomorrow then.
Okay.
So, I can have it for the June 4 awards presentation.
Okay. Proclamation, celebrating the 75th anniversary.
I'll get the exact wording from them, and then I'll get with you on it.
Okay, Madam Mayor.
Oh, also, one more thing. I invite you all to go into our commission office, and there you're going to see a beautiful seal or plaque, I'm gonna call it a seal slash plaque, that Chief Downey gave us on his last day of official business. He came by here and gave us a beautiful seal, so please go into the office and see it. You'll appreciate it very much, Commissioner, it's really very nice. And on the same day, we gave him back his broken-legged firefighter.
The injured firefighter?
We, we, we took the firefighter to the hospital and got it fixed all up, so I presented it to him again that day, he was very, very happy. But it is a beautiful seal, so I welcome you to go into the office and see it. And that is all I have for my report.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item 10, unfinished business. Item 10A, follow-up FEMA hurricane Irma reimbursement, Office of the City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city commission. My office, along with the finance director and Mr. Penna, were involved in the, what they call the RTM meeting with FEMA. We are done as far as the federal level is concerned. We have fully documented all of our projects. They have been accepted by FEMA. FEMA has already sent the money to the state of Florida, to the Department of Emergency Management. I've been emailing a lady by the name of Amanda Campton, I'm sure you've seen some of the emails over time regarding our request for reimbursement of the federal share of all of our projects. We went through what they called a recovery transition meeting, and that basically concluded. And we were basically given a lot of high fives, if you would, over the phone as to how well we have done compared to other municipalities, because everyone is lagging on getting their reimbursements by FEMA. And so, we have, we're pretty much at the top of the list of municipalities that have been cleared with their federal share and now have to deal with the state. So, I think we're getting closer. Now, the effort is, I think, and the pressure is going to be on the part of the state to reimburse us. The state has hired an agency or a third-party administrator, if you would, and I think you have seen some of the memos or emails, KPMG, and that is the agency or the company that is now screening everything that we have documented, that FEMA has already paid the state. They are going through the state process of scrutinizing everything. We signed amendment number five to the contract, we overnighted it to the state, so we have not missed a beat on our end. Like I said, I see the light at the end of the tunnel, and now the pressure is going to shift onto the state instead of the federal government. So, we're hoping that the director of emergency, the federal, the FEMA office, the state emergency management office will respond to our critical need to be reimbursed so that we can pay the credit line in full. The credit line is now expiring on September 30, as I reported at the last meeting, and it is our intent to pursue payment before then.
Thank you.
What the manager failed to tell you is that she told the person that was talking to her, keep the high five, give me the money.
That's right.
I was just gonna ask you, so this is all great, when is, when are we going to see the money?
Show me the money. That's exactly what I asked.
Do you have any, have they given you any idea about timeline?
The only thing I can tell you is that they have already sent, the federal government has released the money to the state. So, it's sitting somewhere in Tallahassee, in the Department of Emergency Management.
Thank you.
Commissioner, maybe you have to take a trip up there and go get our money. You might have to take a trip to Tallahassee and go get our money.
He'll go tomorrow.
Well, we have to, we send the chief of police to get the money.
Mr. Penna, Madam Manager, thank you. I know you've worked, both of you tirelessly, submitting and resubmitting. Every time they ask you for something that you've already submitted, you submit it again. So, thank you for staying on top of this, and I'm very happy here we're getting a little bit closer.
Thank you. And we've learned this, these two portals, if they call them, we've actually mastered the grants portal and the Florida PA website, but I guarantee you, if there's another storm, they'll probably change the software and else again to, so.
Of course, of course.
But we are gonna diligently now use every means of communication that we have to stay on top of the state so that they can release this money.
Perfect. Does anyone have any questions for the manager, Mr. Penna on this? No? Okay, Madam Clerk, next item?
Item 10B, this is a follow-up on water sewer owner, tenant, and customer requests to include revised dos and dons in the revisions of the city's welcome packet. This was requested by Commissioner Blanes, reported by the Office of the City Manager, amendments to be submitted by the city attorney, dos and dons, Office of the City Manager.
We're gonna table, table this, right?
Yes, please. I requested from Mr. Blanes an opportunity to see if we could defer the dos and don'ts, how we're going to handle the dos and don'ts portion of the welcome packet, and how we propose that we be, become more or most effective in letting our new owners and/or tenants become aware of the city's ordinances and, you know, the things that they need to look out for, that they need to abide by.
Very well. So, deferred indefinitely, or deferred until time certain?
Next meeting.
So, table for next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
We are including, for the record, the dos and don'ts in the welcome packets. I think you've all been in the conference room, and they're being distributed. We're doing the best we can to get the attention of the new tenants. But I think we need to develop something a little bit more, call it, be more communicative in terms of sending the message or giving the message verbally to the new owners and tenants that come.
Perfect. So, next meeting on that one.
Please.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Next item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, item 11, under new business agenda items, item 11A, this is a public hearing, property address 1401, 1411, Southwest 66th Avenue, West Miami, Florida, 33144, special use permit, 2019-001, applicant Casillas Custom Homes LLC. Applicant requests a special use permit for planned development for the property at 1401, 1411, Southwest 66th Avenue, there is a script and error, West Miami, Florida, 32144. The property is zoned for R2 duplex, and the applicant is requesting to redevelop the property for the construction of a new two-family, two-story duplex. Special use permit for index number 2019-002, zoning ordinance 282, section 2B1.
Do you wish to read the resolution at this time?
Yes, if the mayor allows me. Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
Yes, item B, resolution of the City of West Miami City Commission, City of West Miami, Florida, for site plan approval of special use permit for planned development, 2019-002, for Casillas Custom Homes LLC, 1401, 1411, Southwest 66th Avenue, West Miami, Florida, 33144, requirements for development of certain lands in the City of West Miami, and requiring complete development of all land, and in lieu of thereof, requiring certain improvements, dedications, and other terms and conditions, subject to approval, of approval by Miami Day and any other regulatory agency, mayor and city commission.
That's another script, and there is only one approval.
Only one. It's a super approval.
Subject to approval of the City of West Miami.
By Miami Day County.
And Miami Day County.
And Miami Day County.
And Miami Day County. Corrected.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. On April 23, the Planning and Zoning Board had a hearing for this special use permit, at which point the owner presented the proposal for a duplex. This property, I don't know if you're all familiar with it, there used to be a house there back in the 80s, a single-family home. Eventually, it got torn down over the years, and nothing was built on it for a while. And now, Mr. Casillas has decided to build a two-story duplex on it. The zoning board heard it. The plans that you have in front of you show the elevations and the proposed site plan. Their only request at that time at the zoning board was that the front page of the plans be improved as to showing the actual driveway with the dimensions and also the additional landscape that's gonna be added to the property. That being said, they heard the application and they recommended approval as presented. Mr. Casillas and his attorney are here for representation.
Good evening, Commissioner. Thank you for your time. Like you just said, this is a zone.
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry?
Name and address.
I'm sorry, Nick Felson, the attorney for Casillas Custom Homes LLC. The area is zoned for duplexes, and he simply just wants to build a duplex. He complies with all the requirements of the square footage of the, of the property and setback requirements, and we move for the commission's approval.
At this time?
I have a question.
Okay.
You know you have conditions, right? You have, you have conditions with the, was, when this, in planning and zoning, was approved, they put in conditions for this approval. You know that? You read the conditions?
Again, the only two conditions were that the plans, the original front sheet of the plans, if you look at it, the driveway, the driveway and the landscaping was like in a faint, if you go to the second page, you'll be able to see it, because the front page is a new page. If you go to the second page, you'll see that it was in a fine haze, the driveway and the landscaping. Now, it is more shown on the plans, indicating that whatever's shown on the plans will be built accordingly.
Is this an actual picture of, or is this just your, like, logo?
It is, it is a rendering.
Would you come onto the podium, please?
Name it, name and address for the record?
Alexander Casillas for Casillas Custom Homes. That is a artist's rendering done by myself, just to show what it will look like in the future.
Oh, so this, this will be? Oh, so this, this will be the actual?
Y- yes, it will be. But it's an artist's rendering.
No, that's fine, that's fine, okay.
So, that's what we are planning to build. Um, as, uh, Mr. Juan Benya had stated just a few seconds ago, uh, we complied by doing the revisions of the zoning, uh, meeting, uh, less than a month ago, by, uh, fixing, improving the front cover sheet, and showing clearly what the driveway will be, and the dimensions of the driveway, which is 20 feet wide. So we have complied with, uh, zoning remarks.
But it's, it's an individual side, I mean, a joint party, a joint party agreement, right? Suggesting the property, if ever sold as an individual side, for exterior maintenance of the property.
Correct.
It's one of the conditions, that's what I ask you.
That's correct.
Do they know?
Yes, at this point, he's-
They don't answer. Do they know that you have the conditions?
At this point, he's keeping the property. That's in case it ever sells.
No, but I asking the applicants, do they know, do they read these conditions?
Yes, we have read the conditions. Yes, we have.
So, that's what I ask you. You know that you have going to impact windows and this, and especially this. This is very important, because in the case, in the future, this can be sold separately. Have to be a, uh, joint, uh, had to be a, a party agreement, um, in order to keep the exterior in the same condition.
The aesthetic, uh, the aesthetic appearance must be kept, um, in all exterior, and they both have to be in accordance. We understand.
Do they have this party agreement?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and your partner, your partner knows too?
Uh, I'm the attorney.
Oh, do you know this?
I, I was not aware of that.
But you, he's attorney?
Yes, um-
So you want a copy of this to read it?
Uh, sure. Yes, please.
Because the, the, he doesn't know about this one, and he's the attorney.
I don't have any. I saw that, I saw that it was zoned, uh, for duplexes, I wasn't aware of-
But this is very important, you know, in the future, a joint party agreement and suggesting the property, if ever sold as an individual side, for exterior maintenance of the property. This is very important, because practically, it's a duplex, but practically, it's a two ho- two houses, two homes. Beautiful, and beautiful. So, this is very important in the future.
Thank you.
But today, line in the, in the second paragraph.
This is fairly standard language when it comes to duplexes, right? It's just a standard private covenant? Or I guess in this case-
Well, I, it, it's standard, but I, I, I want to know, to be sure that they know.
That's all it is, and I agree. We are aware.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Casillas, you're, you're good? Mr. Attorney, you're, you're good?
Uh, yeah, he said he's, he's okay with the conditions.
Okay.
Well, I just want for the record that you're aware of these conditions, the approval.
Yes, we are aware and we are agreed.
And this will be written, this will be written in our papers. So in the future, in the city, record will be this condition.
We understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Penna, anything else?
No, that's-
No? Any other questions from the table? For the, Mr. Casillas or his legal counsel? Any other questions? Okay, so, Madam Clerk, at this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Do we have anyone to speak on this?
No, Madam Mayor.
I have a question, if I may, after you all discuss it.
Well, let me close the pub- is this during the public hearing time? Or I'll close it, and you can ask your question?
Uh, whatever format.
After you close it out.
Very good. Public hearing closed, Madam Manager?
Thank you. My question is, uh, to Mr. Penna, if I may, Madam Mayor. Um, Mr. Penna, are we collecting sewer connection fees for these two properties?
Yes.
The same ones that are on the ordinance that were charged to everybody?
All impact fees that are due.
All impact fee, impact fees and sewer connection fees, right?
All impact fees.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's my question.
Mr. Casillas, how long, when do you think this project, um, will be completed, more or less?
Um, if all goes well, we'll be submitting plans, construction documents, in the next two to three weeks. Uh, it'll depend on how long, uh, we get approval, at those weeks. And, uh, I should take about six to seven months to build. So if all goes well, we should be able to, uh, finish a complete home in about eight to nine months.
And these homes will be for sale?
Um, my, my, the ideal plan is for me to keep one and to sell the other one, yes. Uh, but I am not, um, compromising myself to not selling both of them.
Of course.
But I am planning on living one, living in one.
Very well. Well, hopefully, we, we will welcome you to West Miami when you live in your town.
Um, I got, it's a, it's like a, a hidden secret, I mean, it's a great city.
Don't tell too many people.
It's beautiful.
Try to keep it quiet.
It's beautiful, we love it here.
Well, welcome, welcome to the City of West Miami.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Mayor, I just want to, uh, add, uh, that this application was approved for all the members in the Planning and Zoning Board.
Correct.
Yes.
And is recommended to approve.
Yes.
And it's a beautiful, uh, house. So I make a motion to approve.
It's acceptable.
Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Blanis, add your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Congratulations, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, have a great night.
Welcome.
Mr. Attorney, do you have a card?
Yes.
Business card?
Sure.
Thank you, just for the record, so when I do the minute, I have your information. Thank you.
Whenever you're ready, next item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, item 11C. This is a second reading, a public hearing, in ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, requiring an independent traffic study by the City of West Miami for certain new real estate developments. Creating a pool of providers to conduct said study, and selected on a competitive basis, authorizing the city manager to select qualified independent providers to conduct an independent traffic impact study for new real estate developments, providing for competitive process, providing for a selection process, providing that the cost of the traffic impact study be borne of the applicant requiring said study, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Diaz-Padrón.
Commissioner?
Sure. This, um, this proposal was born from, uh, from listening to residents for a long time, um, especially in the past couple of years, where we've, we've been dealing with development for the first time in a long time. And it's not unique to our city, it's happening everywhere. But there's a perception sometimes that's created that there's a, uh, there's bias between the, in traffic impact studies with developers. Now, the bias is not necessarily real, but there's a real perception of bias. Um, so what this proposal does is it, it creates a more transparent process where there is a elimination of perception of bias between the traffic, uh, impact consultant and the developer. All it does, it doesn't, it doesn't change when a traffic impact study is triggered, but it does, uh, ju- change how developer interacts with the, uh, consultant. I think the attorney want to say something?
Not really, I mean, this is something that, uh, would create transparency and would prevent any sort of collusion. Uh, so I think that, uh, the ordinance, uh, we don't have that in the books. So, uh, it's, it's something that perhaps it would benefit the city.
Right, and I mean, I, I worked for a long time with the city attorney and the city manager to make sure that the residents are protected at every point of this, including, um, financially, so that we, we aren't stuck in the middle of a project that goes dead, and, and we can't pay for the traffic study, 'cause we're, we're paying for, from a developer's money, who then pays the city. So there's no interaction between the engineer, the consultant, and the developer.
It's always good to avoid collusion.
Okay, so, yes, go ahead.
Makes all the sense in the world.
I'm sorry?
I, I said, it makes all the sense in the world, I don't know why I didn't think of that. I, I know that we, we've had some moments here in the past, and there's been some contention about the traffic study, and if it's, you know, and if it's so what they're saying. So, you know, now this, uh, I think it will add, you know, a certain level of, uh, of transparency, that it's not just, uh, a, a, a company that is brought in by the developer, so, yeah, I, I think-
I beg a motion.
Wait, I think, Mr. Penna, you had your hand up?
Madam Mayor, this is a public hearing.
Yes. So, Mr. Penna will speak, and I'll open the public hearing?
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, uh, although I agree with your transparency, uh, this does generate expense, because we now have to put a RFQ together, along with the help of TY Lin, to go out and solicit traffic companies to come and bid as, as far as their qualifications, and then rank them in order to, to have that list prepared for the developer when he comes with a, a development proposal. And at that point, we will rank them and give them the, the, the alternative number that they will be, uh, given once a project is presented. In other words, to, to tell them, this is the company you're selecting, uh, through us, and at that point, from what I understand, we are to pay the developer, I mean, the traffic company, and then the traffic company, the developer has reimbursed us. Correct?
Uh, no, it's, um, it's before the commencement of any traffic study, there is, they're to pay in full to the city.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Well-
And, Mr. Penna, how, how often will we have to do this? Each and every time?
Each and every time a developer comes for, uh, a project that triggers the, the traffic study. So, we do have to, uh, by the Commissioner's request, we will have to have a list of companies that are available for traffic studies, and ranked by the city, that will require, like I said, the assistance of our t- our engineers to go ahead and, uh, generate a request for proposals.
And that cost would not be paid for by the developer? That would be-
No, that would be paid by us.
By us. And, well, if I could just get, more or less, do we, off the top of your head, what that cost would be?
I don't know. The last, uh, request for proposals that we, we solicited from our engineers was about $20,000 to go out for, uh, preparing of the documents.
For the prep, I don't know what it would cost for a traffic study, but-
Right, but that's what, it ended up being for the recreation center.
For the recreation center. However, this is for a limited purpose, an, an RFQ for a limited purpose. It may not be that much, but there will be, to initiate the, the, the project, or, or the, um, to, to be able to enforce the ordinance, we're gonna have some setup costs, and we're gonna have to include those in the budget moving forward. If we have an application between now and October 1st, we have to absorb the costs, and, and if this ordinance passes, we have to direct our city engineers to sit down and prepare a complete set of specification and contract documents, so that we can advertise it and go out for a request for qualifications, that's what it's called. Then we're going to have to develop, and I have some thoughts in mind, on how we can develop a committee, a selection committee, to go through the candidates or the firms that do respond to the bid. So, we have some advertising costs, and we're, we will have some costs associated with initiating the process to comply with the terms and conditions of the ordinance. Moving forward, once you have selected and ranked these firms, we have, they will, I, I guess if it's, if I understand the ordinance and the concept correctly, Commissioner Diaz-Padrón, I suspect that we will be, uh, assigning these firms on a rotation basis. They will, we will pay them, but before they get a building permit, they must pay the city 100%, and that's what I understand.
These contracts not being rebid every time, there's a special use permit application. This is not, it doesn't get continuously rebid, it's a, it's a pool.
Correct.
It's a pool, like, like we have now in our current one, which, by the way, I, I don't know when that was bid out, but that's due to be bid out anyway, so this just does that already.
May I?
Please.
Um, I have been serving Miami Day County as a bond counsel for many years. Um, I'm not doing that right now, but, uh, the way that the county did it, uh, is very simple. Uh, the application is only once, I'm sorry, the RFQ is only once. Uh, there's a selection of a pool, that means a three or four, and, uh, it's in a rotating basis. In other words, every time that you need, uh, traffic study, you are not going to have to go out to bid again.
Right.
So you go out to bid only once, and all ordinances have a cost. So, uh, every time that you have an ordinance, you have to have, uh, publication cost, so, uh, this is, the cost is, uh, it's not gonna be any different. It's just a creation of the RFQ.
So, Mr. Penna, you're saying there's minimal cost, but I'm hearing something different from Mr. Penna. I need clarification.
Minimal cost that Mr.-
For publication.
VLO is, is referring to is for the publication. The actual, uh, RFQ proposal requires specifications, and, and they have to break it down by number of units that, you know, uh, the building's gonna have, uh, the amount of, uh, volume of, uh, vehicles, where it's located, all that has to be put into the RFQ in order for someone to be able to, uh, bid the project properly.
And that's what you said, up to $20,000 each time?
No, no, no.
No.
One time.
One time.
One time.
So it's a one-time cost.
Just to develop the list.
Okay, so, so this is like a setup, so one time, $20,000?
It could be less, I don't know.
Could be less.
The specification and, and contract documents should include, let's call them scenarios for development.
Correct.
And that's a one-time fee to prepare that, that cost. And then, under this proposal, the city would absorb that one-time fee to set up at least the enforcement component for the ordinance itself. The city would absorb that, and moving forward, any project that comes through the city for planning and zoning and, and building must, uh, the developer must pay the cost, 100% of the cost associated with the, um, with the traffic study.
Okay.
And, but the city will provide them with a, a list on a rotating basis, and I think that the mission here, that, or the goal here, is to be able to create a pool of companies that come to the city and create more of a transparent process, and not have one company, um, be performing all the traffic studies for all special use permits for planned development.
So does that mean this, this pool of three or four?
So you can have a number of, of qualified opinions, but, you know, different opinions by different professionals.
Okay, so, am I hearing this correctly? That pool of three or four that is chosen by the selection committee? That is forever?
It'll be covered for the next 10 to 15 years.
Until you revisit the ordinance, if, if there's a, a need to revisit it.
Right. Let me just say another, we have, on the books right now, we have an ordinance that has to do with, um, we have about, I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, three, is it three companies?
Yes.
That are, that are right now designated, allowed to, uh, conduct tra- and that was bid, what, what year was that bid?
2004.
2004. So, I, I, I agree with you that they should be, they should be adjusted every once in a while, that's not contemplated here, but I think that-
It's not, it is, or it isn't?
It is not contemplated here, but I, and it's like it wasn't contemplated in the past, but I think that in the future, or as an amendment, I don't know if the city attorney would allow it, the, um, we, we should, we should contemplate that for a whole lot of contracts. But, and it is not contemplated in this ordinance, um, a certain renewal or, or rebid or any of that.
So if we, if, if this passes tonight, it's open-ended?
That's correct.
Should, should we amend it?
Unless the commission would like to put in, like, every 10 years go through this process, this is why you have a public hearing tonight.
A sunset provision.
Exactly.
On, on that same note, I have a question. I, I was reading the, the ordinance, and, Mr. Attorney, this would be for you. Uh, under section nine, I'm wondering the basis for this. Under section nine, it says, "Any provider that has participated within the last year in an application for any new real estate development, or is currently working for an applicant on any application, is hereby prohibited from participating in the pool of providers conducting the independent traffic impact study for the application." What is the basis of this, if you will?
It's to prevent, uh, if-
Mr. Attorney?
I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
It's to prevent a conflict of interest. It's to prevent a conflict of interest. So, um, essentially, as part of the transparent mission, uh, we, you try to create a reasonable timeframe for the developer and the, and the traffic consultant to not have worked together. So, that they can't have been working with them in the last 12 months, which is a reasonable, very reasonable timeframe, and they can't be currently working with them, with that applicant that's asking for the, the permit. Not any applicant anywhere.
Yeah, but this would also mean that this same provider who we're not allowing to be part of the selection, be, be considered will be, will be prohibited for 10 years.
In that rotation, no, no, in that rotation.
No, no, one year.
One year.
No, it, it would be in that ru, um, they, since, since they're, the, the, they're pooled before the special use permits. So, once, once there is an, an application, that's when they're assigned by rotation. So, whoever has a conflict just can't participate in that particular project with that developer that they, they do, they worked with in the past or are currently working with. But they stay in the pool and they stay in the rotation, they just can't work with that applicant.
And, Mr. Attorney, we can do this?
Let me say this. I'm gonna give you a, a, an example. Everybody has a right to appear before the county commissioner, correct? Yes.
County, county commission?
The county commission, yes.
Yes, okay. But we're talking about us, no?
No, no, this is only an example.
Okay.
Except former county commissioners for two years. In other words, the reason...
That would be for lobbying.
That applies here too?
That applies for here too. The reason is that, uh, you go and revisit the rule, he who has the gold makes the rule. Uh, if I work for someone that needs a traffic study in the city of West Miami, and therefore they're, um, I'm get to, um, uh, make a traffic study that could potentially benefit the party that was paying me before, that would be collusion. So, in order to avoid collusion, the principle is that whoever has worked for a particular company, developing company, will not be able to do it in a particular time. So, that's perfectly legal.
And if I, if I may add, there's, this is, um, that one-year timeframe is a very reasonable timeframe, but is also identical to, to many cities that have very similar ordinances. So, it's not anything new that's, that's in there, and it's, it's in there in other Florida cities, and, and it works just fine.
Okay, so, Mr. Attorney, Section 9 is legally sufficient, there's no, we can do this?
You can do it.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Anything else, Mr. Penna? Madam Manager, anything?
No, I, I, if, if upon passage of the ordinance, then we have to establish a procedure, but I think the way that the ordinance is, is crafted, it leaves that authority within the office of the city manager and/or her or his designee. So, we can establish the protocol of, uh, perhaps a selection committee, how we're going to implement the ordinance.
Commissioner, did you want to amend it as far as that time period?
Um, absolutely, if we can add that in, I, I wouldn't...
It's, your, your, whatever you...
Do you have the, do you, do you have the amendment written, or do you want me to?
No, just go ahead and do it, I mean, if you want to.
Can we, can we add in a sunset provision for 10 years?
10 years.
Yep.
Mr. Penna, is that agreeable with you?
10 years from June 1st, 2019, is that acceptable?
That's acceptable.
And, and that helps us every 10 years gauge the expense associated prior to put, putting a budget together.
Commissioner, 10 years works for you?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
Now, what happened, in some of the companies that you put in, you selected the pool, in 10 years, they, they are not in the business.
Yeah.
So, if we, if we have four companies in the pool now, and one or two disappear, then we are going to have only two?
That's correct.
We cannot add new companies?
No, you would have to go through the process again. If we get down to that...
But my, my question is...
Wait, 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 wait.
One at a time, please, one at a time. One at a time.
My question is, if, and this concept said, well, the pool are going to be four companies, right, VLOs?
Whatever you want, though.
Okay, you're the counselor. We said five companies in the pool, all right, for 10 years?
Hopefully.
Number one, number three, and number five disappear, now we are going to be number two and number three the rest of the years. My question is, can we replace, if one company disappeared to keep the five that we approved in the, in the, in the, in the first moment for the pool? If we approve a pool of five, can we keep the five in the pool?
You would have...
Adding one new if this, if one disappears?
You would need to go through the same, uh...
Selection process.
RFQ process again in order to build it back up to five.
Right. But that's my question.
That is correct, you are totally correct, yes.
Yes.
You're totally correct.
Commissioner Diaz-Padrón? I'd like to amend something, like, if we make it, we decide to make a pool of five companies, if one disappears or two, try to put it replaced, so we keep the number five companies in the pool to make a selection, so we have more variety.
Yes.
Because if the other disappears in nine or nine years, there will be only one at the end of the, the years. So, I think we should replace, if one disappears, get another one. If you decide, your idea in your ordinance is to have a pool of five?
Well, it hasn't been stated, that's not stated.
That was left open, that was left open.
Again, the, 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 the size of your pool is gonna be depending on the amount of people that bid and qualify, so...
Right.
We may have five, we may have three, so it all depends.
So, the pool will be only with the companies, when you open this, the people who come to, to the city?
Correct.
If the people who come to the city are three, will be three.
Let, let me suggest something, you see, the thing is this, you cannot say, I'm gonna have a pool of five. You have a pool...
No, no.
Whoever is approved.
That'll be up to the selection committee.
You have a pool. You, you don't need to say, I have a pool of five. You can have a pool of two, because the county, as a matter of fact, as I said, the reason that I mentioned that I was, uh, bond counsel of the Miami-Dade County, is that they have a pool of three, and there's one that left, so they have a pool of two. So, they get, it's, there's nothing wrong about that.
Okay, now, this is clarifying now. To, in order to have the pool that Commissioner Diaz-Padrón mentioned, the city asks for the people who come to apply. And according with the people who come to apply, the vendors, three vendors, so the pool will be three. Four vendors, so the pool will be according with the number of vendors that come.
Qualified, qualified people.
Qualified, the vendor qualified.
Once we review them, then we create...
All right, and then, and then, it's a period for qualified people, vendors, right?
Yes.
Or say, at the end of the period, we will have, we have three qualified, okay? Now, the, the pool will be three. My suggestion is, even the 10-years period, which is a long time, one of these three qualifiers disappear, try to qualify another one, new one, if, if, if the, if the, if the vendor apply, to keep the pool of three. I mean, if the idea is to have a pool to have a variety.
Correct, but when, when you do that, Commissioner, Vice Mayor, then you have to open it up to all the companies that exist at that point again. You just can't hire one more and bring them on board. You have to open it up again and go through...
You have to close the, our pool and open another pool.
And go through another process.
Okay, now you're clarifying the things. We have seen now the clear, the clear, eh...
If I can ask one question, just for knowledge, um, on our current, on our current, um, traffic engineers, traffic consultants, how many of them, since they're, they're bid in '04, how many of them are still in business?
Two.
Two, the one dropped?
Yes.
Okay, that was, that was, how many years, that was 15?
17 years.
17, 17 years.
Now, now the air is clear, okay? Thank you very much.
Commissioner Diaz-Padrón, I'm just wondering, listening to, to Vice Mayor, might it make sense if we lessen that 10 years? Or, or, I'm just thinking, that's...
Again, it wasn't contemplated on the original one, so I'm, I'm all ears, I mean, that's, that's up for discussion, that's...
Any input, Mr. Penna?
Again...
I mean, 10 years is a long time, so I, I, I'm hearing where, where Vice Mayor's going with that.
Correct, but, but traffic, traffic consultants are very small and few.
Mm-hmm.
So, 10 years is not a long time to have those companies in business, and, remember, if, if, once you lessen to five years, say if you go five years, then we have to go through the process again of the RFQ process, and that's another...
Cost.
Uh, documents and...
Okay.
All right, clear enough for me.
Commissioner Diaz-Padrón, you want to make that friendly amendment then, for your, for the 10 years?
Um, I, I think I added it in, um, and...
Yes, a sunset provision.
And if, if anyone doesn't, if no one has any other comments, I'd like the motion as amended.
Okay. Anybody else second?
I make a motion, all right.
Second?
Mayor, you have to open the public hearing.
Oh, yes, sorry. Public hearing's open. I was so wrapped up in the conversation, I forgot. Anyone here on this item, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam Mayor.
Public hearing is now closed. Call the vote, please.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blanca and second by Commissioner Vice Mayor Suarez. Please clarify.
Yes.
Uh...
I make the motion, I'm...
And then Commissioner Diaz-Padrón had a, a, a mo, a motion as amended.
As amended by...
It was Commissioner Diaz-Padrón.
Commissioner Diaz-Padrón, okay. Yeah, by adding the sunset provision.
Sunset provision of 10 years.
Right, correct.
So... And, and starting on June 1st, 2019.
June 1st, okay, had it written here. So, Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
5-0, item passes. Next item is item D, 11D. This is a second reading of public hearing. An ordinance of the city of West Miami, Florida, delegating authority to the city administration to mitigate code enforcement liens pursuant to lien mitigation procedures established by the city of West Miami and authorizing city administration to release such liens that have been filed against properties in the city of West Miami, providing for codification, for completes, providing for survivability, providing for an effective date. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Blanes.
Commissioner, before you start, if, if I may, Madam Clerk, do we read the resolution that goes along with it as well, which is aye, or do we leave that as a separate item?
I should say that you should read the resolution afterwards.
Okay.
Uh, the reason is that I have prepared, you know, over a abundance of caution, not only the ordinance, but also the procedure to be followed by the city manager.
Very well.
So, you already have it, but you have to first approve the ordinance and then the resolution.
Very well, okay.
And I have a question for you, Mr. Attorney. This, uh, this public hearing was advertised just as it appears on the agenda, but, uh, later after the publication, you made amendments to the heading of the ordinance?
Yes.
Which we have here, so, at this point, is it, is it feasible to contemplate the one that you prepared after the publication?
Excuse me, I have to take a look at it because I forgot about it.
Okay, let me show you. Allow me one, uh, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Yes. The wording of the first reading.
They just quit, the wording was written.
Okay. Thank you, the city attorney has clarified. We're gonna go by the heading as originally was published by, um, by my office, so, as I said, this public hearing was advertised on a newspaper, general circulation, and, um, and, uh, you may, I mean, proceed, Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Blanes, I believe you had...
Is it all straightened out?
Yes.
As far as the city attorney and city clerk, yes.
Okay. Well, basically, you know, this is something that, that, you know, I've been thinking about for a long time, and that is that, you know, that every time that there's a, a mitigation for code enforcement violations, I feel very uncomfortable, you know, having to, to mitigate, uh, the fine. And, you know, I've always felt that it was, it should be handled at the administrative level. I think what would be more appropriate is for us to legislate and to give the administration, you know, a, set a ga, and, uh, a guideline to go by. Typically, what happens, you know, when we have a severe case of code enforcement violation, is that, you know, you have a absentee landowner or a landowner that, uh, does not very much care about, you know, the quality of life of its, of its neighbors, and it inflicts, you know, a burden on the, uh, on, on, on the, on the neighbors for a very long time. So, you know, we're limited to, to, to doing what we do, and that is, you know, to cite them, to go through the, the legal procedure and to, you know, establish a fine, and the fine is, is, you know, uh, every day the fine builds up till they, uh, you know, they have a, a, a large amount of money that they, that they owe the city. So, so basically, what happens is, most of the time, the property owner is only affected when he's going to sell his property. Because, you know, we put a lien on the property, and now there's a liens, and now he wants to sell, so he can't, he's gotta get rid of the lien. So, basically, what happens is, he basically, uh, sells the property, and, uh, the new prop, the new property owner comes before us, and we usually mitigate, typically, we mitigate the, uh, the code enforcement, the code enforcement violation. I think, and, and consequently, and I'm sure every, everyone sitting here, you know, what we want is to, to definitely mitigate and to definitely get that house, you know, fixed, uh, someone living in it and, you know, squared away and on the tax rolls. So, but what happens is that the property owner, the person in violation the whole time goes scot-free. And, and the, and, and, you know, because he gets paid what he wants, and the new property owner comes before us. So, I think it should be the other way around. I think that we should legislate and legislate and have the administration, um, have a, uh, a guideline to where, um, a certain percentage cannot be mitigated. In other words, if they owe X amount of money, they're gonna be responsible for X percentage of the fines, and there's no, no mitigation. Now, there will be a, a percentage that can be mitigated, but that will be handled by the administration. So, you know, I, I think that, you know, more appropriately, it should be for us to, to legislate and give them the power to resolve these issues. And I think that by, by fixing and requiring, you know, the person, the property owner in violation to have to pay a certain amount, and it cannot be mitigated. Once that is known, you know, I think that we will get more, uh, 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 what do you call it, that there will be more apt to follow the law and resolve the issue, thereby, you know, improving the quality of life to all the residents.
Mm-hmm.
Do I make myself clear, my colleagues?
I'm sorry to, to interject, if you allow me. The problem with that is that, uh, you cannot force a property owner because, uh, we cannot enforce prob, uh, liens on property owners that have homestead. In other words, you cannot force a person to just go ahead and pay anything, because that would be against the Florida constitution.
I don't follow you.
You cannot force a lien on a property owner, enforce, I'm sorry, that has a homestead. In other words, if I have homestead and I have a lien against my property?
Right.
You cannot force me to pay anything. You have, you cannot, uh, uh, foreclose on my, on your lien against me because I'm, uh, I have homestead. See, what you're delegating, uh, right now, is the ability to the city administration to follow your guidelines and say, we're going to do it like we have done it before, providing a certain rules that must be established, and this pursuant to Florida statute. You have to take into consideration, you see, and that will go in the lien mitigation procedure, it says, "When determining the recommended amount, the city manager and/or his, uh, her designee shall consider the following factors." This is Florida statute, that's not our doing. The gravity of the violation, action taken by the applicant to correct the violation, previous violation committed by the applicant, the cost of any upon application to correct the violation, whether the applicant was given reasonable time to correct violation, the current... the current property value compared with the amount of the lien, documentation of compliance date different from the original calculated, whether the property is owned, occupied, or investment property. So this is Florida statute, so.
Well, we, we do that already, but, but.
Except that instead of you doing it, the administration is going to do it.
Exactly.
Exactly.
That's, that's, that's what I would like.
Right.
And, and, and further, I would like to, you know, to have, to give them a guideline, you know, where there is set amount that they would have to pay. In other words, there's amounts, first of all, you know, the way that we've been doing this, it's, we mitigate and we make sure that we cover all the, all the costs. Madam Manager and Mr. Penau, the Code Enforcement Director, says, "We, hey, this cost us $5,000." So, you know, right off the bat, you know, they're gonna have to pay us at least $5,000, right, to make up for all our costs. So, I think that, you know, we need to legislate a certain percentage that cannot be mitigated. I don't know what that percentage would be, I think that, you know, it should be up to the administration, you know, one that would definitely cover all our costs, but one that, you know, they would have to pay, and it could not be mitigated. Again, I don't know if there could be like a sliding scale to take into consideration what the attorney said, uh, with all those points that he brought up, especially the amount of the fine and the amount of what the property is worth. Maybe there can be some kinda sliding scale that.
I'll give you two examples, if I may. Number one, Francis, assuming that a corporation owns a property, you could fore- could foreclose on that property, okay, because it's not a homestead. You cannot give homestead to a corporation, okay? But assuming that you have leaned a property who has homestead, that you can ask for close because it has homestead, okay? And then comes a new owner, totally innocent about what happened before. He comes and purchased a property. The question is this, is it fair to tax the new property owner with the bad deeds of the former property owner? And that's what you have been taking into consideration in the past.
Caveat emptor, you know? Buyer beware. He's buying and he knows what, what the issue is, then, what will happen then is, is, you know, uh, you know, capitalism will kick in, supply and demand. You know what? He's not gonna be able to sell the house for $100,000. He will sell it for 70. And then the new property owner will pay the fine. And.
I, I don't think that you could do, impose a, a fine on someone that has not violated the law, Mr. Commissioner.
But he's, it happens all the time. The new owner comes here and he pays for, uh, he mitigates whatever the fine is.
We mitigate it, but as I say, you cannot treat same a person that has violated the law as someone that innocently buys in. So we have mitigated more the person that has buyer beware, purchase a property, and comes out before you to mitigate it.
Before you buy a property, you know, usually hire an attorney, and they, and they do a, um.
Lien search.
A lien search.
And we disclose.
And they, everything is what the law is, how it applies, what they're responsible for. So at that time, you know, the attorney of the buyers can say, "Listen, this guy owes $10,000, and he is got to, you know, if you buy the, if you buy the property, you're, you're gonna be on the hook for $10,000." So, you know, at that point, the price will be negotiated. Minus $10,000 or whatever the fine is.
It's totally up to you, but, you see, we have advertised a particular heading. We cannot change the purpose of the ordinance at the second reading.
But I thought, I was, I was under the impression that, 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 that we were, that, that, that we could actually do this with this ordinance, that we could act, that there would be a certain percentage that would be, that the violator would be responsible for.
Well, as I say, we advertised, and it came out before you on the first reading. And when it first to, came to, the first reading, nothing was said, because there's no discussion, but since you can call, the commissioner can call, any commissioner can call, and say, "Well, this is not what I want, let's go ahead and amend the heading before we publish it." See? Now, if you want to say, in the heading of the ordinance, there shall be a minimum payment of whatever.
I assumed, I apologize.
Okay.
I, in my head, I assumed that that, that was something that was in there.
The percentage.
Yeah.
And I, would you read the ordinance again?
I stand corrected. Well, you know what? Now that we brought, now that I bring this up, I, I think maybe it would, would it be proper for us to discuss this at this time?
Well, it's a second reading, so this is when the discussion would take place.
It's a public hearing.
You have to amend it and publish it again.
I, I, I thought this, this ordinance only transferred the, the power, the mitigating power to the administration, and the administration can then set those, whatever guidelines it wants to mitigation, right?
The commissioner is totally right. Totally correct.
We, we could, we could technically do this, and then cont- and the administration contemplate that later with whatever advice they wanna take.
But it would be totally up to this administration at that point.
You're going to prove such a point to, you, you, the main purpose of this ordinance is not to set standards of collection, it's just that the main purpose of this ordinance is to transfer authority to the city manager. Now, the resolution that is going to come afterwards sets forth the guidelines. So, as I say, please don't amend the ordinance, transfer the authority to the manager, and then if you want to, in the resolution, you can instruct the manager to do whatever you want.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay?
So, so let's.
This is ju- this second reading is just to pass the authority.
Right.
From the table to the city manager.
Right, I, I do have one concern on it, though, just very brief.
Are you, Mr. Commissioner, you, Commissioner, proceed.
Um, the, my only concern is that since we're the body giving the, giving the fine, right, since the administration is the body giving the fine, and they're, they're the arbiter and the executor of it, of the mitigation, is there an, is there some sort of appeals process we can interject in there? I mean, I don't.
I believe it does say in here that they can come before us. It's, I'm not sure if it's stated in this one or in the resolution, in eleven I.
Oh, is it? Is it in the resolution?
But it is, I read it, it is in one of.
I, I didn't get to just read the resolution, so, if someone can confirm that for me? Because I don't see it in the ordinance.
So you go to eleven I.
The resolution is at the end of the.
It is, it is in the, it is in the resolution.
Beautiful.
And, and, well, let me be sure, I thought I read it.
Yes, in the I.
It is in eleven I, right?
I thought I read it, too.
Yes.
You good?
It's in the resolution, the.
Should, should that, should that be part of the ordinance?
The commis- Commissioner Diaz-Padron is asking about the appeal process. Is there an appeal process? And is it in the ordinance, or is it in the re- in the resolution?
The resolution.
It's in the resolution.
Should, should that be part of the ordinance, though?
Well, if you want a part of the ordinance, you would have to amend the ordinance.
I mean, amend the, when you say amend the ordinance, you mean amend the ordinance here, or you mean amend the ordinance and republish?
You would have to publish, republish it again.
The heading.
I'm sorry?
The heading of the ordinance.
But as I say, if it's in the, the resolution, it just expanding.
May I have a question?
Yes, Commissioner Diaz-Padron, or you?
Mr. Bialos, you the attorney of the city, all right? So, Mr. Blanes, normally, I like many things that you bring to the table because that's common sense, but I have a question about this in this point. The administration is to keep the numbers, to keep the money comes in, the money comes out, how to pay this, how to pay that. Do not take, when you talk about legislation, when the people come here to ask for mitigation, practically, we are making legislation, what are, what is a problem and what is the solution? Now, Mr. Bialos, I, I mean, can you, Mr. Bialos, can, can we are, I understand that we, the table, the, the commission, we are a quasi-judicial body, right?
I'm sorry?
We are a quasi-judicial body, right?
You are the judicial body, and not the judicial body, the legislative body.
Okay. Now, the manager, the administration, the employees in that department, they don't, right?
No, they don't, they, they don't legislate.
Now, Mr. Blanes, suppose we have a manager now, who have a very good common sound, common sense, and the resident have a problem, and comes in front of that manager in this case, could be Public Works Director, other case, but suppose it's the manager. And the manager is one person, she likes the resident, and the, and the mitigation conversation goes very well. Suppose it's one person, the manager and one person, the resident. Suppose opposite, the resident and the manager do not, uh, like each other, the mitigation conversation will be another one. I think the mitigation should be here in front of the table. If you don't like, because I don't like it, I feel very bad when the people here come up, sometimes crying. I understand you don't like it, and I understand it's heavy. Well, if you don't want to come to the meeting, don't come. But I think mitigation should be here, transparency in front of the table, in front of everybody, even to the public. I don't think the manager or the Public Works Director, any employee of the city should be, have a private conversation about the mitigation. I do not, I do not, my common sense don't give me that clear to have that position. I think the mitigation should be here in front of all the commissions, mayor, and the attorney, and the public. Really, Blanes, I understand that you don't like it, it's very hard, but I think it's no good idea to have a two persons in private to discuss the mitigation. And I, Bialos, I ask you your opinion about what I said. Am I right or wrong?
That's a very valid opinion.
Because I think, I think.
That's why it brings it out to the public hearing.
I think.
And by the way, let me, let me say something. Before, I mean, at some point, we had a first reading and a second reading, and that was it, and it was a good thing that we had. Then at some point, we developed the three standards, in other words, the three steps that we would discuss, all of this in here, before the city attorneys instructed to draft a, uh, a, uh, an ordinance. And then we have an idea of what to do and what's wrong and so on and so forth, because that's a very valid point. And Commissioner Blanes' point is very valid, you know, and it's up to you by majority vote to vote the A or N. But Commissioner, Vice Mayor Suarez has a very valid point, so.
Mr. Attorney, that process you just mentioned, isn't it still in place?
I'm sorry?
The, the process you just said about discussing before requesting an ordinance, isn't that process still in place?
Well, I don't think that this was discussed in the three stage, that's, that's my point. I was just making that point, that.
So we're, we're not following that process, is what you're saying? Or what are you saying?
What I'm saying, we're talking about two things now.
I, I'm just, I heard what you said, I didn't.
Well, I take it back, so we don't mix the orange and apples, you see?
Okay.
See?
Okay.
This in particular, this issue in particular, Commissioner Blanes has a very valid point, and Commissioner, the Vice Mayor Suarez has a very valid point.
Right.
He thinks that it should be right in the open, and Commissioner Blanes thinks that it should be delegated to the administration. So it's up to you to vote one way or the other. If you're not agreeing with the Commissioner, with Commissioner Blanes, you should vote no. If you agree with Commissioner Blanes, you would, you should vote yes. And the, uh, uh, statement by Vice Mayor is a valid statement.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Suarez, I, I would agree with you. I would agree with everything that you have said, but the fact is that we're not consistent. Every time someone comes here for mitigation, it's black, and it's white, and it's yellow, and it's green, and it's red, and it's, uh.
It's an open discussion, that's a good thing.
No, no, yes, it is an open discussion.
That should be that way.
It is an open discussion, but it's not consistent.
Well, according to your concept.
It is, Commissioner, if, if every time, if every time that someone would come here and ask for mitigation, and we would be consistent, we would, we would use a certain guideline, and we would be consistent, which would be the fair, which would be the fair thing to do, okay? Treat everybody the same. But the fact is that that does not happen, we are not consistent, and I wanna avoid that. Most cities, most cities, and we should, I, I believe that maybe a survey was done, most cities, the mayor and the city commission, they stay out of this business of mitigation. It is handled administratively, they have a set of guidelines to go by, and they go by those set of guidelines, and they are consistent.
Do you have the list of the cities?
No, the list is not in the packet.
Do you don't have the list of the cities? I don't have it.
No, it's not in the packet. It's, it's not in the packet.
It's not in the packet, I don't see it.
Commissioner Blanes was saying a survey.
May I have, may I have a point of order, please?
Yes, you may, sir.
May I have two minutes?
Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you.
Two minutes. We're gonna take a two-minute recess, please.
Please.
Each case is weighed on its own merit. Because each case is different.
Can't compare the little way.
I'm sorry, two times. You're fine.
Where did I go?
May I have a comment?
Let me open the new backup. We need to back open, go ahead.
There's a difference between a fine and a lien. A, the court enforcement board has the legal authority to mitigate liens, I'm sorry, fines.
Fines.
However, once it becomes a lien, it has to go before the city commission, for the city commission to release the lien and collect some sort of fine. Uh, the issue is that the purpose of court enforcement is not to collect money, but to, to comply with the ordinances, okay? The reason that it cannot have or should not have a set price for everybody is that each case is totally different. As I said, and I read from the statute, the gravity of the violation, action taken to correct violation, et cetera. So if you said, let's go ahead and collect 10% for everybody, that would not comply with Florida statute. You have to consider each and every case differently, but apply your common sense by majority ruling. As I say, we understand what your predicament is because I talk to lawyers all the time that call me and say, well, let's go ahead and negotiate the price and whatever. There are properties that have accumulated not only here, but also in the county and all over the place, four, five, six hundred thousand dollars. There's no way that a judge will rule with you to collect a 10% of a $600,000 fine. No way. I mean, I have not seen that at all. So it has to be something reasonable. It has to be, for instance, if the, uh, the violation have been corrected, whether it's a good faith or simply an oversight or whatever. I understand that you should be responsible for your property. But this is your common sense of what you have to do and what is for you to do. As I said again, uh, before, Commissioner Blanis has a very valid point. And Commissioner, Vice Mayor Suarez has a very valid point. Most cities delegate, not the commission, the commission does not, in City of Miami, Miami Dade County. If you go out to the Miami Dade County hearing, you don't see Miami Dade County Board of County Commissioners mitigating any, any fines or any liens, okay? Most of them delegate their authority to a hearing master, like the one that hears the, uh, the red light camera tickets. Uh, this is why the commission does not involve themselves in the, in the art of negotiating or deciding what fine are you going to collect from people. So if you want to continue that they come out before the commission, like the Vice Mayor wants, you should vote that way and, you know, he should vote no. If you decide to vote with the rest of the ordinance with Commissioner Blanis, you should vote yes. That's it.
May I have a question for the, for the attorney? Uh, me Alos, the City of Miami have the, it's a, it's a board, where you go for mitigation, right?
It has a board and it has also a hearing master.
The hearing master preside the board, right?
Not a board.
No, 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 it's not a board.
One person.
One person. One person is a hearing officer.
Because I was thinking in Miami-
City of Miami, yes, sir.
City of Miami, mitigation liens, and there are five people.
Sir, there's a board, City of Miami Board of Enforcement Board, that mitigate fines, not liens. Lien is different from a fine. A fine is something that you say that you owe a certain amount of money. A lien is when you go out to Miami Dade County clerk of the Board of-
Okay, I understand. Now, the point is this. Do you recommend that the commission should delegate in one person, in this case, propose the manager, to take care of the mitigation? That's your legal recommendation?
I pass. It's not my job-
No, 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 no. You are the lawyer of the commission, you are a lawyer of the city. If we have, if I ask you a question, you have to tell me yes or no, you cannot tell me I am limbo.
No, sir, because that's something that the commission has to determine.
No, no, if one of us ask you a question-
Yes.
You should have an answer.
The answer is that I am not a legislator. You are the legislator and you're supposed to-
I am not-
I, I'm not here to recommend anything, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor.
You are here to tell us what to do.
Because I'm telling you that that's not my job.
Well, I understand, if you give me the job that Christian was, City Attorney is to orientation.
Orientation is one thing, but-
Well, in this case, what your orientation in this case? You recommend, your orientation is to delegate to the manager?
Giving an opinion, Com, Vice Mayor, on something that two commissioners has a diverse idea is not my job. That's your job to vote yes or no.
But if I have-
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
I never seen that you, attorney don't have an, an, an answer.
He just did answer, Commissioner.
That doesn't answer, Pepe.
Madam Manager?
Um, may I offer a, a, a suggestion? Madam Mayor and members of the city commission, before you call this to a vote, let's do something, let's do a formal survey. And let's see who has a hearing officer, which is something that our city attorney just proffered. And I have heard of cases where cities do have a magistrate, as they call them. Let's see if cities have, um, an amount up to a threshold or sets a threshold for the manager's office to mitigate these liens. And which one of them have a, a mitigation process before the commission? Let's do a survey, don't kill the item.
I thought Commissioner Blanis said we already did that survey.
We, we called several cities, I myself called several cities. Gotti called a couple of cities, but we don't have a survey, a formal survey. However, this is an important issue and it deals with mitigation of liens against properties. And I know that these cases that come before you can become difficult, can become emotional for the person who's up here requesting it. I know it involves attorney. So before you either call a vote or kill it or pass it in a way, I propose we do then a formal survey of all municipalities in Miami Dade County that are similar to size like ours. And I know the county in the City of Miami, they do have hearing officers, the manager has certain authority. Let's see what those, where those authorities lie. And let's come back and give you a, a, a complete survey on that.
I agree with that.
Is that the word of the commission?
Not for me. I mean, you know, that's not going to change my, my vote. I don't, I don't, I don't really care what anyone else is doing.
If it doesn't change your vote, Commissioner-
I just, I just don't think that we should be in the business of mitigating, you know, liens. I think it should be handled administratively or by an administrative hearing officer or whatever. But we should not be doing that. I don't think, I don't think there's many mayor and, and city commissions that do this.
Well, what the manager is saying, she's just going to provide us with the information as to who is doing it that way.
Okay, I'm fine.
So we have, I guess the survey you mentioned would be what she's going to do now.
I, I don't agree, but I, I guess the majority does agree, so I'm going to have to go along with it.
Well, I, I'll tell you where I stand on this, just to clarify.
Will you stand on what? What the manager is recommending? Or will you stand on-
Both. It's, it's tight end, it's very short. Um, I, I think they're both right. I think that we, this board usually goes with recommendation of, of the, of the administration anyways on mitigation. When I'm, from what I've seen in the audience, um, I think that it's probably better for, um, most people who come for mitigation to do it through administration just because it's faster, um, because we usually go with, with administration recommendation. I do agree with the Vice Mayor that you could have a situation, I mean hypothetically, down the line where, where the manager, let's say, doesn't like somebody or, or, or likes somebody. Um, and I'm not saying this manager, I'm saying down the road. Um, where they, they get different and they get a difference in, in their mitigation. I, I'm more scared of somebody getting, um, somebody they don't like getting a higher mitigation amount, but that's contemplated by an appeals process that comes back to us. So that, that, honestly, that, that concern is quell for me. The only thing, I guess, would be whether it's the city manager or hearing officer, against that first step. So if, I mean, if everyone wants to get, get a survey and see who want, who wants to do with the city manager or the hearing officer, that's where, that's where I stand. I mean, that, that's what I would be in favor of.
Well, if this ordinance goes forward as is, it is the city manager.
No, I understand that.
So if we wanted to, to consider a magistrate versus a manager, we would have to have the manager do as she recommended and, and give us some more information.
And, and, and the magistrate comes at a price, obviously. So we would have to put in an application fee that would help us or assist us in recovering any expenses with the magistrate.
I wouldn't get ahead of herself because we might not even find that. We might not even find the need for hearing officer from, you know, standard protocol.
If we were to-
Let me, if I may-
Yes, go ahead.
About a comment, what the manager just said. Uh, paragraph 10, print A of the procedure that I drafted, says, "City manager consideration." A party seeking to have his or her mitigation of a court enforcement lien must submit a written application to the city manager as well an application fee of blank. So I already had thought about that. Okay?
That's what I was, been asking for, for some time.
And that's why I had it.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. I've been asking for this for quite some time, so thank you for, for incorporating that into this.
First of all, the order of the agenda is this, we have a, an ordinance right now.
But, Mr. Attorney, you're jumping on to 11-9, shouldn't we?
If we're going to change the ordinance, we will have to republish whatever, uh, ordinance you want to, uh, review next time around. Okay? That's number one. If you're going to vote, it has to be voted now.
As is.
And it will end or die. And if you want to table it to the report of the manager, it will have to come to another day.
Do we have to republish if we table it?
It's not tabling, it's a continuation of the public hearing.
You can continue, continue the public hearing. We wouldn't have to republish?
Correct, I'm corrected, okay? But in the meantime, you have people, just like that lady over there, that needs to come before you, that have been waiting for us to make up our minds because she does have a real issue on her hands, okay?
Okay.
And she does have to apply for a mitigation hearing, either before you or before the manager or somebody, because she does have a problem. And that she has been waiting for a couple of months for us to make up our minds, so-
I see.
If you decide to, uh, set it for another day, she will request a hearing before the city commission. So she ends up her plight and come before you, okay?
Okay, so-
Like all the people that have been, also been waiting. We have a couple of attorneys that have been on my back on, on this issue.
They're waiting to see who they're going to come before. Okay, so, again, we don't have to republish if we-
Continue it.
We would, it'd be a continuance.
To a time certain.
If we go with the manager's suggestion to provide us with more information as to how different cities. Yes, Commissioner?
Okay, so we would have to re-advertise if-
No, no, we don't have to re-advertise it. We have to re-advertise it if we change our minds as to what we're going to do.
Okay.
We would, it'll be a continuance if we allow the manager time to, to survey-
Make a list.
Other cities.
Okay.
And present us with more information.
Okay.
I mean, that can't hurt to have more information before.
Right, the list is the cities, right?
Is the table, is there anyone opposed to a continuance of this item to allow the manager time to?
No, I just want to make sure that what the survey has to do is, is getting not only whether they have administrative lien mitigation, but also who does the administrative lien-
Whether it's a magistrate, whether it's commission, whether it's the manager's office or his or her designee. Um, we, we would do a more complete survey if you would. Now, I would ask that we give us ourselves a little bit of time and we're probably talking about 45 days because we depend on the response from each manager, each clerk's office or each code enforcement officer. If this, if it were up to us, I could assign somebody to doing the survey or do it myself and prioritize it. But sometimes the answer is not so easily available as it may be with us. Some cities you have to jump through hoops to get to the right department.
Do, do we have to set a date on, on when this comes back?
Yes.
As a continuation, right now?
Continue to a date and time certain.
And if I may, because again, we're, the clock is ticking in terms of, there's just no possible way we could have it for the next meeting.
No, for June 19th, the second meeting of June.
Second meeting of June, June 19th would be the earliest.
Okay, in the meantime, in the meantime, I have been formally asked by the attorney for this lady to request a hearing before the county, the city commission, if the city commission does not pass this, uh, ordinance this afternoon.
So that will be following our current?
So we would have, uh, her hearing on the next following-
On June 5th.
City commission?
Yes, sir.
June 6th is the next city commission.
June 5th.
5th, 5th?
Yes.
So you'll be here on June 5th?
What's her name, what's the name of the lady?
I'm sorry?
Let me open the public hearing and close it and then we'll continue with that. So, um, there was no opposition, everyone is in agreement, given the, the contin- So Madam Clerk?
So you need a motion?
written application to the city manager as well an application fee of blank. So I already had thought about that. Okay?
That's what I've been asking for, for some time.
And that's why I had it.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. I've been asking for this for quite some time, so thank you for incorporating that into this.
First of all, the order of the agenda is this, we have a, an ordinance right now.
But, Mr. Attorney, you're jumping onto 11-9, shouldn't we?
If we're going to change the ordinance, we will have to republish whatever ordinance you want to review next time around. Okay? That's number one. If you're going to vote, it has to be voted now.
As is.
And it will end or die and if you want to table it to the report of the manager, it will have to come to another day.
Do we have to republish if we table it?
It's not tabling, it's a continuation of the public hearing.
Continue the public hearing. We wouldn't have to republish.
Correct.
I'm corrected, okay? But in the meantime, you have people just like that lady over there that needs to come before you that have been waiting for us to make up our minds because she does have a real issue on her hands, okay?
Okay.
And she does have to apply for a mitigation hearing either before you or before the manager or somebody because she does have a problem and that she has been waiting for a couple of months for us to make up our minds, so.
I see.
If you decide to set it for another day, she will request a hearing before the City Commission, so she ends up her plight and come before you, okay?
Okay, so.
Like all the people that have been, also been waiting, we have a couple of attorneys that have been on my back on this issue.
They're waiting to see who they're going to come before. Okay, so, again, we don't have to republish if we.
Continue it.
We would, it'd be a continuance.
To a time certain.
If we go with the manager's suggestion to provide us with more information as to how different cities, yes, Commissioner?
Okay, so we would have to re-advertise if.
No, no, we don't have to re-advertise it, we have to re-advertise it if we change our minds as to what we're going to do.
We would, it'll be a continuance if we allow the manager time to, to survey.
Make a list.
Other cities.
Okay.
And present us with more information.
Okay.
I mean, that can't hurt to have more information before.
Right, the list is a city's, right?
Is the table, is there anyone opposed to a continuance of this item, to allow the manager time to?
No, I just want to make sure that what the survey has to do is getting not only whether they have administrative lien mitigation, but also who does the administrative.
Whether it's a magistrate, whether it's commission, whether it's the manager's office or his or her designee, we would do a more complete survey if you would. Now, I would ask that we give us ourselves a little bit of time and we're probably talking about 45 days because we depend on the response from each manager, each clerk's office or each code enforcement officer. If this, if it were up to us, I could assign somebody to doing the survey or do it myself and prioritize it, but sometimes the answer is not so easily available as it may be with us. Some cities you have to jump through hoops to get to the right department.
Do we have to set a date on, on when this comes back?
Yes.
As a continuation, right now?
Continue to a date and time certain.
And if I may, because again, we're, the clock is ticking in terms of, there's just no possible way we could have it for the next meeting.
No, for June 19th, the second meeting of June.
Second meeting of June, June 19th would be the earliest.
Okay, in the meantime, in the meantime, I have been formally asked by the attorney for this lady to request a hearing before the county, the City Commission if the City Commission does not pass this ordinance this afternoon.
So that we'll be following our current.
So we will have her hearing on the next following.
On June 5th.
City Commission?
Yes, sir.
June 6th is the next City Commission. 5th, 5?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll be here on June 5th.
What's her name, what's the name of the lady?
I'm sorry?
Let me open the public hearing and close it and then we'll continue with that. So, there was no opposition, everyone is in agreement, given the continuing, so Madam Clerk, we will.
So you need a motion?
Open the public hearing and continue.
Public hearing is now opened, is there anyone to speak on this item?
And you continue then the public hearing until a date and time certain of June 19th, 2019.
Let me, let me clarify this for the record and so everybody understands it. Next time that we come here on this particular item, if there's any changes or there is any willingness to change, we will have to re-advertise. We don't have to re-advertise this because we're putting it for discussion on next time, next date certain, but if we change it, we will have to re-advertise it. Is that correct?
Understood. Does everyone understand that?
Yes.
Yes? Very well. Okay. Close the public, public hearing? No, we continued it.
You continue the public hearing, Mr. Attorney, do we need a motion and second to continue the public hearing until a date and time certain?
Yes, yes.
Motion by Commissioner Blanes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Diaz-Patron. So on the motion to continue, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz-Patron?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five zero. Thank you.
You, I missed, who will contact the resident for, or did you know already you're coming?
She will, she, they actually have requested officially from me.
Okay.
Her attorney, so.
Perfect.
I get together with the clerk so she, she can be on the next agenda.
Good, good, okay. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Okay, next.
Next item is item 11E. This is a first reading, an ordinance of the City of West Miami, amending ordinance 2008 03, deleting chapter 15, article 3, section 1551, amending chapter 15. Wait, 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 amending chapter 15, article 51, amending chapter 15, article 3, section 1552, authorizing city administration to have the option of contracting for water services directly with property owners or with tenants renting from property owners, imposing a deposit for water service upon real property located in the City of West Miami, providing for codification, providing for surveyability and providing for an effective date. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Blanes and this is a phase one.
First reading, no discussion?
Phase two, no discussion.
Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Diaz-Patron?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes and this will be advertised, published. I think we have time for June 5th since we have like a week, sometimes it's better. If this is the day of the meeting, we have to, I have, I have, yeah, I have, I have time, sometimes when it happens between the first and the third week is different.
Right, June 5th, we would recommend.
June 5th is the public hearing and second reading of the ordinance.
Madam Clerk, if I may, I just want to make a comment.
Sure.
I'm going to urge the table before the next meeting to actually read the ordinance so you can have all your questions ready for the, you know, for the second reading. Literally read the, read the ordinance so you understand exactly what's, what's going to take place. Okay, proceed please.
Next item is item 11F. This is a first reading ordinance of the City of West Miami, Florida, creating chapter entitled abandoned real and commercial property to include but not be limited to providing for purpose and intent, providing for definitions, providing for notification procedures, providing for regulations of abandoned real and commercial properties, providing for the registration of abandoned real property, providing for maintenance and inspection requirements, providing for security requirements and providing for penalties, providing for enforcement, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, providing for surveyability, providing for an effective date. This item is sponsored by Mayor Rodriguez.
First reading, no discussion?
Motion.
Second.
Yes, and, and again, this, the second reading and public hearing will be advertised for June 5th, 2019 at 7:30. We have a motion, we have a second on the motion. Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Diaz-Patron?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Madam Clerk, I have a question from you. When do you have to advertise for that, submit the advertising to the papers for this?
The requirement for, for an ordinance is 10 days.
Okay.
Prior to the, the public hearing, so based on this, I. Before the end of the week? Yes, before the end of this week, let me check.
I would respectfully request from the City Commission that if you have, please review the heading again. If you have any changes, let us know so we can change it and publish the adequate, the correct heading on the papers, okay?
Are you thinking of referring to this report?
It's got to be read the way that it's appeared in the years tonight.
Yes. If I may?
Yes, please.
As I recall it from my clerking days, the ordinance must be advertised the way it is read on a first reading.
On the first reading, yes.
The reason that I mention this is that if you decide to change anything, it would have to go to a first reading again, okay? If you decide to change it, it would have to go to a first hearing again. We have to advertise the way that we, we have the, the heading of the ordinance.
Question changes a substantial part, right? Changes substantial part.
If you change the heading.
Change the heading.
Okay? You have to rehear it on the first reading again.
Very well.
June 5th, 2019, so that the clerk can properly advertise.
Next item, item 11G. This is a first reading, an ordinance of the mayor.
I would draw this item till I can meet with the city attorney and confer once again.
Item G.
G. Mr. Attorney?
It's okay.
Should we read the, is the question to withdraw the item, so?
There's no vote on that.
No vote on that, so item withdrawn.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Until further notice. Next item will be item 11H. This is a resolution of the mayor and the City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager the expenditure of $18,393.63 payable to Environmental Products Florida in connection to the needed repairs to the city's VAC truck, providing for effective date, mayor and City Commission.
Madam Mayor, if I may yield to Mr. Penna to talk to you about the condition of the vehicle, the age of the vehicle and the repair needs and then I'll talk to you about the funding mechanism if possible.
Yes, please, Mr. Penna.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Can you briefly tell me what a VAC truck is? That would be helpful.
I was going to ask the same question. You beat me to it.
The VAC truck is one of the, the pieces of equipment that we use to clean storm drains and sewer clogs when we have clogs in our sewer system.
And what are the circles?
It's a, it's a big vacuum cleaner. We bought it in 1997, it is 22 years old now. The chassis is in magnificent shape, but however, the body over time has taken its toll. Like I said, it's 22 years old, constantly breaking down, so we took it to, back to the, one of the authorized dealers in Broward and in order to get it back into shape and reliable for the next five to 10 years, we need to spend $18,393 to bring it up to date. It has several items that need to be replaced, the big orange reel on the front carries a big hose that's 400 feet long that has several breaks in it. The reel that actually holds that also has a bushing that's leaking a lot of water that needs to be replaced, so the whole thing needs to be taken apart. The actual wiring system to the, to the actual body needs to be replaced also in order, because of the time and age of the vehicle, the wires are very brittle, we're losing a lot of components.
What's the cost of a new truck, Mr. Penna?
Three, about $300,000. We paid $177,000 when we bought it.
And when did you say was the last time we had to repair, repair this to this magnitude?
We've never repaired.
We've never, this is the first repair.
That's right.
And this should last another five to 10 years, you said?
Correct.
These repairs.
We only have $6,000 in our budget as a maintenance account, so the rest of it has to come from somewhere else.
Where's it coming from?
Well, we're going to have to take it from reserves, however, I'd like the record to reflect that we have reserves in the stormwater because you have the, the worth of the infrastructure. However, you have a day-to-day operating deficit in the stormwater enterprise fund. So at some point in time, we're going to need to readdress this. You can charge reserves and you're still going to show a big surplus, but this is only going to add to your operating deficit. It's a cash deficit if you would.
But this is not a matter of if we have to fix it.
We have no choice.
We cannot be without this truck. I'm sorry?
We only have one unit.
One unit and.
We can't be without it, so it's not a matter of.
Right.
It is optional.
Yes, this is a, this is a must.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner?
So, Penna, according with the manager, we have the money.
We have the.
We have, you have and she has, so we have the money. The point is this, the point, the point is coming this, we are in May, soon is coming the hurricane season.
It starts.
And many, many cities like us have trucks, have equipment for the, for the hurricane season that had to be repaired, have to be remodeled, so first come, first served.
That's right.
So we already have the money, we should go as sooner as possible.
The truck is up there waiting on us.
Before another city goes ahead of us because then they tell you they need, we need 60 days, we never know.
Correct.
Okay. Anything, any other questions, comments, concerns?
Motion.
I make a motion, you make a motion?
I second.
The manager has something.
Second as soon as possible.
After the vote, I just wanted to find out how long it would take for the repairs, when we should see the truck back.
It's in line waiting for service, so I would imagine within two to three weeks we will have it back.
Perfect.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, you have several motions and several seconds, you have to figure this one out.
No, we have Commissioner, Commissioner Blanes made a motion, second by Vice Mayor Suarez. On the motion, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Diaz-Patron?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Next item.
And, Madam Mayor, since this item is in connection, was in connection with item 11D, I think we should continue this, this item until the June 19th meeting.
You're referring to, to item I?
To the resolution, to item I, 11I.
Actually, I don't, I think it stands on itself alone, it's a process.
Mr. Attorney?
For the application and the.
Would you recommend to entertain the resolution right now instead of, of tying the resolution to the ordinance that was continued until June 19?
The resolution on the procedure?
Yes.
If we're going to change the, the heading, the original ordinance, I think that we should continue the resolution as well.
Very well, continued resolution as well.
Okay, can we just affirm?
Is there anyone opposed to this?
Yeah.
So we need, do we need a motion to continue the resolution?
I'm sorry?
Motion.
Or to defer the item? Okay, motion by Commissioner, Vice Mayor Suarez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Diaz-Patron. And on the motion, Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz-Patron?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five zero, item deferred until June 19.
Next item.
Item 12, consent agenda items, none this evening, we have, we had the request for proclamation which was approved for Silvania. Item 13, good of the order.
Anything for good of the order? No?
United.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Oh, no, sorry, good of the order?
Yes, if you allow us to advertise Silvania's celebration on, at their campus, I believe it's the 23rd.
Saturday, May 18th.
It's this Saturday.
Their flyer on our website so that they get more exposure.
I, Madam Manager?
I don't see why not. It is our municipal public school.
Is there anyone on the table opposed to that? No opposition? So be it.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Our favor.
Adjourn, meeting adjourned.[1739.11]